Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law. I would also like to ask members of the audience to please silence your cell phones if you haven't already have. At first, I'd like to start with the flag salute in a moment of silence. Councilor Memhard, would you like to lead us in the flag salute, please? Thank you. So, welcome to this evening's February 11th city council meeting. We are going to try to get this through the agenda as efficiently as possible. At first, I would like to, without prejudice, I would like to take one item out of order, a memorandum from the general council regarding the Meadows Field, so without objection. Council Cox?
I think we should do the normal beginning and then take up council matters, so like public input or...
Okay, well, my proposed was that we related the council. I have an announcement I'd like to make before everybody sits through the council meeting or has whatever on their mind. So, I, second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, under section two dash five, exercise of powers, quorum rules of procedure, under the city charter, section C, rules of procedure, the city council shall from time to time establish rules for its proceeding. Item number two, special meeting of the city council shall be held at the call of the mayor as provided in section three dash eight subsection B, on the call of the president of the city council or on the call of any three or more members by written notice delivered in hand to place the residents, residents or businesses of receipt confirming electronic mail of each member at least forty-five, forty-eight hours excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays in advance of the time set and to which includes notice of the subjects to be acted upon. So, as city council president, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the Meadows Field section of the Planning and Development Committee to February 25th city council meeting. And I'd also like to schedule a public hearing for this matter on Monday, February 24th at seven o'clock here in the auditorium. Do I have a second? So, on the motion to hold a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I'd also like to entertain a motion to continue this matter from PND to the February 25th meetings. That way, it gives us a whole evening to digest the public hearing, so we won't be voting after the public hearing on the 24th.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion second, does everybody understand? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, the public hearing will just be for the Article 97 only, so that way, we'll have a chance for the public to speak in favor and opposition of moving forward that evening. So, it'll be, just be Article 97 only because that's what we're going to ask the state legislature to take a look at for us. So, that being said, I appreciate everybody being here tonight, so that way, we can start off, you know, this meeting on a, on a good note. So, oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regular scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency throughout the office of the mayor. The residents will be notified within two weeks, period, relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performances. So, is there anybody who, here who would like to speak under oral communications this evening? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
Councilor Nolan.
On a motion by Councila Blank, seconded by Councila Hara, the ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Cindy Dunn to the Dogtown Preservation Committee Commission, term to expire 2/14/23, and I so move.
Motion's been seconded, made in second, any discussion? Council Gilman.
So, I've worked in partnership with Cindy Dunn for the last four and a half years in the Dogtown Advisory Commission. She's a standout volunteer for the city. She's an attorney. She brings a breadth of knowledge. She knows so much about the history and the matters that are going to be in front of us, so I wholeheartedly support this appointment. Thank you.
Councilor Nolan.
Basically the same. Cindy is excellent in everything she does, and I really appreciate her stepping up to work on a committee that's going to have a lot of bite and direction to change and maintain Dogtown as it is, and thank you, Cindy.
Council Holmgren.
I'd like to echo Councilors Nolan and Gilman. Cindy, you have such an incredible breadth of talent, and you could have applied to any number of commissions or committees or boards, and I am incredibly grateful that you've chosen to bless us with your talents regarding Dogtown. Thank you.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes, I just want to support Cindy. She, she was on the animal ad hoc when I was first on the city council four-plus years ago, and she was so dedicated as Council Holmgren was, and she'll, I'm sure, continue that effort and dedication that she's shown to this wonderful city. Thank you, Cindy.
Is there anyone else? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Cindy. We appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any councilors that like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Council, oh, actually, yeah, Council Pat, anybody else? Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need a second.
Oops, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council Pat?
Yes, I'd like to, under number two, the approval of the minutes of PND of two five twenty, on page two, the last line, the numeric says $1,000, and it needs to be struck and in place of that, add the words thousands of dollars. And I, so move.
Second.
Okay, so, we have to take a step back, Council Pat. You have to identify what, what number you have to, it being said already, we can, we can move forward with it. Okay, so, does everybody, does everybody understand, Council Pat? There was a typo in the minutes of the PND meeting. Council Gilman?
Could you repeat it one more time so we can hear you?
Yep. On the PND minutes of two five twenty, on page two, in the last line, the numeric $1,000 needs to be struck and in its place to add the words thousands of dollars, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of February 6th.
Councilor Cox.
Budget and Finance recommended unanimously to, unanimously recommended the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a federal grant of an overdose data to action grant from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, passed through the U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention for $100,000 per fiscal year over the next three years for a total of $300,000, to amend existing substance abuse prevention program grant contract for a new grant award total of $800,000 for the purpose of the Gloucester Health Department partnering with the Gloucester Police Department to enhance the community impact policing unit through financial support for the dedicated full-time employee, community health navigator, to serve as a liaison between health, social services, and the community to facilitate access to services and improve quality and cultural competence of service delivery. The grant period is through June 30th, 2022, and there is no local match for the grant, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I mean, we're increasing the, the grant that we were already awarded. About 50 residents have been transported to treatment successfully through funding from other sources. I mean, it's a grant for substance abuse, so I sincerely doubt we're not going to turn it down.
Good. Very good narrative. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Councilor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Mass Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, public access charging grant for $8,429.72 for the purpose of expanding opportunities for citizens and visitors to charge electric vehicles by installing two new charging station ports at Gloucester High School. This grant expires January 10th, 2021. A match for this grant will come out of the city in energy efficiency incentive funding from past city projects, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, self-explanatory or you have a narrative?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory. Council Gilman?
Um, it's so awesome to have such a great turnout from city staff, so I'd love to ask our planning director to come out and tell us why this is important to the city.
Perhaps unnecessary. So, again, this is just in the, in effort to continue to expand the opportunities for electric vehicle charging in the community. This program is, is something that we can continue to, you know, pursue. It'll be interesting to see, the other thing that we have to track is utilization, but we do continually get requests from citizens as well as looking at, as we've kind of electrified our, our fleet, as well as the resource officer uses an electric vehicle, so it seemed like a logical next step to start looking towards potential students, faculty, staff that might also be able to utilize this station at the high school.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Council Pat?
Yes, Greg, just to answer a question, my understanding is from discussing that this is going to be down in the area by the automotive shop?
Yes.
So that it'll be totally away from the area where there has been any flooding over the last number of years or whatever?
Yep, so this is basically a project that's fully designed, utilized the city electrical contractor to scope the project, so it's been located in an area that's, that's, has much reduced risk than other areas of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. So, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Councilor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a fiscal 20 traffic enforcement program grant from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration from the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for $10,500 for the purpose of traffic enforcement in the city of Gloucester. The grant period is from January 6th, 2020 through September 15th, 2020, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Funds will cover department overtime costs for directed traffic enforcement patrols. There will be some handheld device themes this year, and the police will focus on problem areas.
Thank you. Council Gilman?
Because we have Chief Conley here, I'd love to hear from him, and if you can just tell us a little bit about your views of why this is important for the city, it would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening. You trying to find out where these enforcement efforts are going to be, what time, what exact day? That's, nice try. So, this is a grant that comes out every year. The state actually reaches out to us and encourages us to apply for it. Lieutenant Gossem applied for this, did a lot of really good research and data, and we received that the state gives us certain themes throughout the year that we have to, so we've already had a, we've already had a OUI theme, there'll be a distracted driving theme, there'll be a speeding theme. This is going to, this coincides with some new equipment we're hoping to get, that we're going to be able to measure, data, traffic data, speed data, along different areas where we receive a lot of complaints, and we want, hope to use that data to be really smart about how we deploy our, our efforts. And so, this, this grant will handle the overtime cost to do so.
Thank, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Cox?
So, I'm going to do the next one a little bit differently because there are two, three, four, five individual motions. I can give you a summary of the appropriations ahead of time, or we can take them one by one. It's up to you. Do you want me to just do the motion and then the summary?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation 16 in the amount of $1,800 from the Waterways Enterprise Fund to Waterways Enterprise Fund Property Liability Insurance Account to fund the Harbor Masters Department Insurance Deductible and Premium Increase. And I so move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded?
That one's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, so, these are supplemental appropriations, so each of one of these motions is going to need a roll call vote. So, is there any discussion, any of the councilors? Madam Clerk, can we call the roll, please?
Councila Blank?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
And Council Holmgren?
Yes.
City council motion to approve SA 2020-16 in the amount of $1,800 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
All right. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation 17 in the amount of $32,600 from the Waterways Enterprise Fund to Waterways Enterprise Fund Boat and Marine Equipment to fund the purchase of transient mooring balls and moorings and an outboard motor and vessel electronics, and I so move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any narrative?
Okay. Now, I'm trying to, to do math in my head because there's bits and pieces. All right, so, $6,800 for new transient mooring balls, this is a two-part replacement of the transient moorings on the city water sheet, $10,100 for a new Suzuki outboard motor, and $5,700 for new electronics on the 25-foot Parker Patrol and Rescue Craft.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Madam Clerk, can we call the roll, please?
Councila Blank?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
And Council Holmgren?
Yes.
City council motion to approve SA 20, SA 17 in the amount of $32,600 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation 18 in the amount of $2,988 from the Waterways Enterprise, to Waterways Enterprise Fund Purchase of Services Account to fund the purchase of an online mooring reservation software package, and I so move?
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
The $2,988 is for the Dockwa Online Mooring Reservation Package with the last season being the most successful yet for reservations for transient moorings, and this experience is the updated version of the city's online reservation system. Not only will it take the reservations, but it'll enable an electronic wait list as well as the other transient boater information about the city's amenities.
Any other questions? We, we do have our Assistant Harbor Master here for any questions, if anybody comes up with anything. All righty, Madam Clerk, can we call the roll, please?
Councila Blank?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
City council motion to approve SA 18 in the amount of $2,988 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation 19 in the amount of $10,000 from the Waterways Enterprise Fund to Waterways Enterprise Fund Office Furniture to fund the purchase of office furniture for the renovation, renovated Harbor Masters Office and Visiting Boaters Center, and I so move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
The total for the furniture for the visiting boating center and Harbor Master Office is going to end up being ten, $40,800. I have one more motion to go over. This is a two-part appropriation for the purchase of furnishings through office solutions delivered and assembled.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councila Blank?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
City council motion to approve SA 19 in the amount of $10,000 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Councilor Cox?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation 20 in the amount of $30,800 from the Waterways Enterprise Stabilization Fund to Waterways Enterprise Fund Office Furniture to fund the purchase of office furniture for the renovated Harbor Masters Office and Visiting Boaters Center, and I so move?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Uh, that's the follow-up transfer for the total cost of the furniture.
All righty, Madam Clerk, can we have the roll, please?
Councila Blank?
Yes.
Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council Pat?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
Council Gilman?
Yes.
And Council Holmgren?
Yes.
City council motion to approve SA 20 in the amount of $30,800 passes on a motion of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Could I ask our Assistant Harbor Master just to come up to the podium, please? So, now that we've given you all this money to sit around in your Harbor Masters office, can you just briefly tell us how the project is going?
The project is, was moving right along until last week they found asbestos between the front wall of the building. Slowed things down quite a bit, so it looks now that upstairs will be finished in proper time to, first, that visiting center will be a little bit delayed until they can figure out asbestos removal plan.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to bring you up here. It's, it's good for us to know, that way, if we come across somebody out in the public, we can, you know, update them with a couple of things also, so.
Thanks, Also.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee Report of February 3rd.
There are no matters for the council action under this heading?
Uh, next order of business, please.
Is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of February 5th.
Councila Gilman?
My matter has been postponed, but I did want to remind the city councilors that there is a site visit this Thursday at 3:30 at 105 Winger Sheek Road for the building heights in excess of 35 feet in the R20 low, medium-density residential district, and the rain date is Monday. Hold on, it's, it's here on the minutes. The, the rain date is Thurs, um, the rain date is Tuesday, February 18th at 8:00 a.m., and we're meeting in the driveway of that property. So, just wanted to make sure that all the councilors were aware of that. We moved it up to 3:30 on that first day because there is a building committee meeting that the School Building Authority Board is having, and we thought some councilors might want to attend that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councila Gilman, and for those who are attending, make sure you bring your bathing suits, supposed to be balmy that day. I'm just kidding. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is for council vote, the motion for reconsideration, Council Holmgren, city council vote of January 28th, 2020 regarding the amendment of Gloucester Code of Ordnances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 2, Division 2, Traffic Commission regarding the number of members in the membership.
All righty, thank you, Council Holmgren. I agree with this too, I think we should bring it back, have another look at it and make sure we have voting bodies, non-voting bodies, there was a lot of moving parts that day. So, we're going to bring this back to ONA to take another stab at it and bring it back up to council. So, do we have, Council Holmgren?
I'd like to move to reconsider the city council vote of January 28th, 2020 regarding amendment of general GCO, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 2, Division 2, Traffic Commission regarding numbers of members and membership. And I'd like to refer to ONA, and I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Council Holmgren.
Okay, and...
Madam Clerk, next, uh, order of business?
On the Animal Advisory Committee by City Council Representative, Council Scott Memhard.
Councilor Memhard?
Moving right along here, the Animal Advisory Committee is fully, fully staffed with our volunteers, we have a full quorum, which is great. On their agenda, we're coming up with, on the piping plovers at Good Harbor Beach season, we'll be working with the CONCOM agent, Adrian Lennon, and our volunteer staff on that. We're also working on reviewing our city's livestock regulations, and also a concern about pest control and avoiding raptors and other birds of prey being injured by pesticides that get into the bloodstream of anticoagulants, so they're actively reviewing a number of those matters and looking for best practices, and we're also very much aware that it is coyote breeding season, and if your dog doesn't howl at night because there's howling going on outside the window, I don't know what, your dog has, is deaf. There, there was a sighting of two dogs piling on each other, which caused a problem over on Old County Road, it was explained to them that they were mating.
Thank you, Council Memhard. We appreciate what the Animal Advisory Committee does, especially with the plover season coming up, birds of prey, people putting out rodent pesticides and... season coming up, uh, birds of prey, people putting out rodent, pesticides, and, um, it affects the, not only the, what they're trying to dispose of, but also a bunch of other animals, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is council request to the mayor.
Uh, Counsel Pat, we'll start with your side.
None.
Counsel Holmgren.
If you are available, please come to, uh, the city of Gloucester's One Billion Rising Ceremony, uh, on Thursday, February 13th at 5 o'clock PM, to stand with millions of others across the globe demanding an end to domestic violence and sexual assault. Thank you.
Counsel Nolan.
I just want to remind everybody in the Magnolia area that the next three weeks there'll be construction going on at the Magnolia Pier, and there'll be some detours on Shore Road. Uh, we hope to have the pier finished by March 14th, and, uh, thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel O'Hara?
I, I want to, um, ask the mayor, uh, two things through the school committee, if they would consider allowing the, um, O'Malley property to be used on Fri, on Saturdays and Sundays, Friday and, let's see, Saturday, Sunday, Friday and Saturday, uh, for the purpose of a satellite parking area. Uh, at that point, cater, um, buses could be used, this would be in the evening, a cater bus would be used to ferry, um, users of that parking area to downtown where there is a shortage of parking in the evening to benefit the retailers, restaurants. Um, this bus would be supplied by cater at no cost to the city. Uh, that would take place the middle of June through Labor Day, including holidays. Also, I would like to ask the mayor if she would consider, um, as Counselor Cox and myself are part of the Citizens Emergency Response Team, if we could reactivate that. Um, at the time, the Counselor Cox and I, when it was active, um, we had a large contingency of, of people throughout the city that were dedicated to the city, um, and I've spoken to Chief Conley about this, and he would be in support of it, and so I'm asking that, um, the mayor consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Hara. Counselor Memhard?
I would just like to thank, uh, the school committee members and the city counselors that joined us last night at the East Gloucester School Auditorium for Award One Community Meeting. It was an important opportunity for some of our neighborhood constituents to, uh, express their concerns to be, to be heard, and I think we all did a good job of listening to them, which is a, always a switch of roles, and very, was very constructive, so thank you all.
Counsel Cox. Counsel Gilman.
Two quick matters. Number one, I just wanted to thank the Public Works Department for the, their oversight in the removal of dead trees amongst all the dams at Goose Cove Reservoir. The contractor was good enough to replace the muddy spots with pebbles, and they also went about sweeping the entire walkway to the delight of many walkers that frequent that area, so that's exciting. I also wanted to just mention that our Dogtown Preservation Commission now has five appointed members, and, um, in addition to our DPW Director and our Conservation Agent, and I'm looking forward to being appointed, hopefully, for that, because we're ready to start meeting, and we're excited about that, so I just wanted to give you that update. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gilman. I have nothing this evening. Uh, could we call for a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. We adjourn. Good job, everybody.